I would like to take this opportunity to welcome you to the school board meeting this Tuesday, April 3, 2018. If you wish to speak during hearing as citizens, please pick up a card in the back of the chambers, print your name and topic clearly, and return the card to our board assistant, Kathy Tompkins. At the appropriate time, I will call you up to speak. First, please stand for the flag salute under the direction of retired Master Gunnerie Sergeant Frank Troxel and the Venice High School Color Guard.
Thank you, Venice High School Color Guard. you guys can be our student representatives today. So moving on to special presentations, the first presentation is the All-Star Art Student Recognition. I'd like to invite Angela Hartsonken, I always mess up your last name, program specialist for the Fine Arts K-12, to the podium to give an introduction to the groups being recognized this evening. Welcome.
Good evening, Chair Ziegler, school board members, Mr. Hardy, and Superintendent Bowden. Tonight, we will be recognizing a number of students for their successes in the arts. We have a talented art student and a number of our talented all-state music students. Of course, the achievements of these students have been made possible by their supportive families and their dedicated teachers and administrators. You will hear some recognition of those individuals as well. Lastly, we will be honoring two of our middle schools and one of our elementary teachers for state music recognition. We're going to start this evening by congratulating Caleb Hoover, who had this amazing piece that you see right here. And actually, Mrs. Artman, if you want to come and help us out? It's entitled "Barn Owl," and it was selected to hang in the Florida Capitol Building in Tallahassee as part of the Art in the Capitol Visual Art Competition for middle school students. Caleb's art was delivered to the Capitol by Senator Greg Stube and was displayed in the Capitol Building for the duration of this year's legislative session. Caleb is an incredibly talented artist whose enthusiasm for birds comes through in much of his work. He's a student at Brookside and this year is taking art with Angela Artman Scott. Let's thank Caleb's family for their support. Could you please stand? And Senator Stube returned Caleb's piece to me yesterday and sent a letter of congratulations that I'd like to read right now. Dear Caleb, I'd like to express my wholehearted congratulations to you having your barn owl artwork selected for display in the Tallahassee Capitol Building during the 2018 legislative session. What an honor representing our district at the 2018 Art in the Capitol Competition, which is open to middle schoolers annually. Keep up the good work, and I wish you continued success. Once again, congratulations. Very respectfully yours, W. Gregory Stube, District 23. So... He's getting that letter, a letter from the Fine Arts Education Specialist at the State, and a certificate. We would like to, you'll get a little bit of exercise tonight, but not too much. If Ms. Artman Scott, Brookside Principal Mr. Gruel could join us up here, and board members, if you don't mind joining us down here, we'd love to take a photo with Caleb. So maybe in the center? or FMEA, the Professional Education Association that serves and supports music education across Florida. At the FMEA Awards Breakfast on January 12, two of our middle schools and one of our elementary music educators received recognition. This year, Woodland and Brookside were honored with enrollment awards, which go to schools with high enrollment in music courses. This designation is good for three years, and Booker Middle, Venice Middle, Laurel Nakomas, and Pineview High School are all current enrollment awardees. Both Woodland and Brookside have had this award in the past, but had to reapply at the end of their three-year period to earn the award again. Woodland has had 47% of its student body enrolled in music. I'd like to invite Woodland music teachers David Wing and Christopher Riley, Principal Dr. Cindy Hall up here to join me with their award as we give them a hand. Additionally, Brookside has 54% of its students enrolled in music courses. Music teachers Holly DeWitt and Marina Pope, and, you've seen them before, Principal Matthew Gruel, please join us with your award, and we'll recognize you with a round of applause. Laurel Nakomas Elementary Music Teacher Charles Allen was one of nine teachers statewide to receive the 2018 Music Education Service Award. This designation is awarded to music teachers who have been active in the field for 25 years or more. Charles was recognized for 31 years of service in music education, and still going. Charles, could you join us along with Laurel Nakomas Principal Ray Wilson, and Assistant Principals Christine Oliver and Heather Wasserman? And Board, could you join us for another photo? You only have one more after this. You'll get your work done. Good, there you go.
All right, I'm standing behind Matt.
And I promise we'll share these photos with all of the teachers so that parents, you'll be able to get them as well. And school board members, that goes without saying. All right, lastly, we are here to recognize our Sarasota County students that were selected to represent our district and their school music programs in an all-state music ensemble. FMEA, which we just heard about, and its component organizations, present 21 different all-state music ensembles that rehearse and perform as part of the annual FMEA Professional Development Conference that is held annually in January. Students are selected for these ensembles from across the state through a rigorous audition process or teacher recommendation, depending on the ensemble, to perform with exemplary music groups. Students perform and rehearse with their colleagues from across the state and are directed by a state or nationally recognized conductor in that musical area. The all-state experience is so impactful and so valuable, something our students will remember for a lifetime. This year, we had 68 students from 16 schools selected to play in 18 ensembles. 25 music educators helped their students attain this opportunity. And many of you received a blue-colored sheet, and you as well, Board, have a blue-colored sheet for the names of all the students, their schools, their ensemble, and their teachers. This evening, we have about half of our all-state students and their families here. It's a very busy time, and we're very appreciative that you're all here. If you're a parent, grandparent, or sibling of one of these students, we are all very aware of how much you do to support them in their music, and we so appreciate you. Everything from listening to those beginning pieces on the trumpet or violin to chaperoning them at all-state, family members of these all-state students, please stand so we can recognize you for all that you do. Thank you as well, and congratulations to our school-based administrators for the support they give their music programs. If you're a principal or assistant principal of one of these students, please stand so that we can thank you as well. Students are eligible for all-state ensembles based on their teacher's membership in FMEA and its component organizations. In most cases, students are also supported by their teachers in the all-state selection process with help on theory or sight reading, or coaching on the performance of excerpts. Their teachers arrange for hotel rooms and many other logistics. I know our students and their families know the value of these teachers, but let's take a moment to recognize them. I'll only recognize the ones that could be here with us this evening. Please hold your applause, I know it's hard, until I have named all of our teachers present. Teachers, please stand and remain standing as I read the names. Charles Allen, well, you're here as, as, go ahead. Holly DeWitt. Sarah Downey. Tamara Lewis. Christopher Mink. Victor Mongello. Chris Riley. Nadia Sava. Kathy Schepler. Joan Tracy. And David Wing. Did I miss anyone that's here? I didn't? All right, let's give them a giant hand. Thank you so much for helping me celebrate these talented young artists and musicians tonight, and thank you for your support. As a district, we allow for this to develop and grow. All right, all-state students, when your name is called, please come forward to receive a certificate and line up for a picture. If I have a couple of teachers or administrators that are willing to help get them arranged a little bit, that would be awesome. Stay up here till all your names are called, and then we'll take our picture and invite you down. All right, and we'll ask the incredible Mr. Brian Hirsch to help us hand out certificates. All right. Oh, yes, you probably need the certificates. Oh, and I meant to, I wanted to show you, and teachers as well, these are available to teachers of all-state students, I'm not sure you are aware of that. It's something you can order, and you'll want to talk to Ms. Holly DeWitt to find out how to order these and get them for your schools so that they're able to display them. All right, I did my best to learn names, but I apologize ahead of time. All right. Ally Elberney, Sarasota Middle School, Middle School Treble Chorus. Sarah D. Bontrager, Brookside Middle School, Middle School Treble Chorus. Franklin Boyer, Imagine School at Palmer Ranch, Elementary Chorus. Emma Byrd, Sarasota Middle School, Middle School Treble Chorus. Carrie Carr Jr., Venice Senior High School, Senior High Men's Chorus. Brianna Connolly, Sarasota Middle School, Middle School Treble Chorus. Carolina Der Bogosian, Sarasota Middle School, Middle School Treble Chorus. Joseph French, Heron Creek Middle School, 7th and 8th Grade Honor Band. Michael Gutierrez, Pineview School, Concert 910 Band. Jacob Harvey, Riverview High School, High School Mixed Chorus. Casey Hodge, Venice Senior High School, High School Mixed Chorus. Donna Jarrett, Riverview High, High School Mixed Chorus. Landon Jarvis, Ashton Elementary School, Elementary Chorus. Rachel Kernitsky, Imagine School at Northport, High School Honor Band. Anna Kiefer, Sarasota Middle School, Middle School Treble Chorus. Hannah Lippi, Ashton Elementary School, Elementary Chorus. Lillian Lowman, Ashton Elementary School, Elementary Chorus. Geronimo Manrique, Fruitville Elementary School, Elementary Chorus. Tanner Mitchell, Northport High School, Concert 910 Band. Charlotte Murphy, Pineview School, Symphonic 1112 Orchestra. Shalini Nair, Pineview School, Elementary Chorus. Monae Neal, Woodland Middle School, 7th and 8th Grade Honors Orchestra. Erin Olson, Riverview High School, Senior High Women's Chorus. Juliette Pauling, Pineview School, Elementary Chorus. Mike Saltzman, Sarasota Middle School, Middle School Band. Tricia Sapotera, Pineview School, Concert 910 Orchestra. Gemma Slipak, Pineview School, Elementary Chorus. Abram Smith, Woodland Middle School, 7th and 8th Grade Honor Band. Haley Sprague, Venice Middle School, 7th and 8th Grade Honors Orchestra. Have I missed any all-state students in the room? Come on up. And we have Nina Proudy, Sarasota Middle School, Middle School Treble Chorus. Let's give these talented students a big hand. And that will figure this out. Now you can turn around and face these guys. You can scooch around if you want. You don't have to stand. Thank you very much. Mrs. Goodwin.
Well, I just want to congratulate all of you. Caleb, your artwork is fantastic. All of you that have won awards in music and chorus and other things, the all-state ban is really, really difficult. I serve on the State Music Education Board, and I've learned a lot more about what's involved in putting all of these different performances on and all of the different MPAs that go on in every district, and it's a lot of work. And we think that we have a lot of things figured out, because in this district, about 68% of our students are involved in the arts. The average in the state of Florida is about 48%. So we think that we're doing something well and right, and we know how important the arts are to all of us. So thank you for all your hard work, because you don't get the recognition that you're getting without being the best, and without performing the best, and without doing a great job on a daily basis and making sure that you're prepared. And thank you to your teachers and to your parents and to your community, because you're really great. Thank you.
I too want to put a shout out to all the parents and the teachers who helped bring these kids here. You've got to be so proud of yourselves, and I hope that this is just a stepping stone, that you use this and continue to use the music that you've got the talent for, you know, in future endeavors, if not for, you know, a career, at least for your own enjoyment and for your families. It's a wonderful thing to have. I'm so proud to be a part of a school district that has so much to recognize for. I mean, we've had state champions in here for the baseball, no, the football teams, and we had kids in here with the highest academic scores for the sports teams, you know, we've had the arts in here. It is just so wonderful. And I know sometimes our community wants to know what it is, although with a 77% passage rate, I think they understand that it's this music and is what we're doing for you is why they help support us with the referendum. And, beginning this weekend, I believe it's going up now, the Embracing Our Differences Display on the Bayfront, where we've got, teachers are in there, we've got students whose writings are in there, and students whose artwork is down there. Plus, there's people from all over the world made contributions, and by and large, the most of them are coming from our students here. That is a wonderful thing to see, and I hope you all and your parents get a chance to go down there and see that, if not with your classrooms, at least on your own. It's a fun afternoon, and I encourage you to go down there. We've got so much to be proud of here in Sarasota. Thank you. Thank you for making us proud.
Thank you. Mrs. Zucker.
There's not too much to say after that, but I would like to congratulate you also on your hard work and your dedication to what you do. I hope that you do continue this as you grow older, because it's really important. I think it'll keep your mind active. I know I drew my first painting two years ago with my grandson, using a piece of string to outline flowers and the grass and then filling it in, and I had such a ball, because I'm not creative. So I was surprised I could even do this. To see the art that you produce is just amazing, absolutely amazing. And I have to thank your parents, because your parents have to be there behind you, because if they weren't, it just wouldn't be, I think you're tops because you have parents behind you and supporting you, and your teachers as well. We are very fortunate here in Sarasota County. I'd like to thank our entire community for your success, because it's our entire community that has helped us make you successful. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Robinson.
Yeah, I'm just gonna cheat and copy off my fellow board members. You know, Shirley Brown said it correctly when she was talking about the referendum and the community's support, being able to put the resources so you guys are in those positions now. I echo Ms. Duckers about the parents, somebody's got to take you to practice, somebody's got to sit there at the recital when everybody else is gone and you're the last person there, somebody's got to take you to that private tutor. So make sure when you guys are done, to make sure you thank them. And Ms. Goodwin, who probably does more for the arts up here than anybody, given her time and traveling to make sure that our voices are heard, so that the programs that we have here aren't just countywide but nationally recognized, can you just, can you center? I mean, Ms. Goodwin knows more about it than me, but from my point of view, I'm just going to tell you, I'm jealous. I mean, I don't have an artistic bone in my body, and I wish I, I wish I did. So keep doing what you're doing, keep growing, keep practicing, keep getting better, and then you have people like me just look at you jealously as you guys get even better. So keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you. I will summarize, since I know most of what has already been said, and to echo my colleagues, but something that Ms. Goodwin said I thought was tremendous, is 68% compared to 48 in the state, and I think that's a testament to how deeply rooted the arts is in this community, and how the continuation of the support of our community, to see that transcend to the future generations is tremendous. Thank you for everything you do, and thank you for leaving, allowing them to be close up here when we have our comments, but thank you again and congratulations. Give them a moment till we move to the next special presentation. While the families and students depart, I'd like to call Don Clayton, Supervisor of Alternative Education, to the podium for our next special presentation. Good evening.
Good evening. How are you today?
Well, thank you.
It is good to see you. Good evening to everybody. I'll just wait a moment.
Yep, absolutely.
There's a lot of hugs and congratulations going on, and I think that's always a great thing to make sure we honor. So I'll get started. So as you know, I'm the supervisor of Alternative Education, discipline, and several other areas that we work in in our district. And in this position, I have come to realize that when we talk about alternative education and in discipline, we're talking about the wonderful people who do the work of providing services and support to our children. First and foremost, I want to say thank you to the school board, under your direction and our leadership with our superintendent. As a school district, we've taken on the task of making sure that we provide support and restorative measures to our children. and restorative measures to our children. Our teachers and our school-based leaders do an amazing job with this, but I've also come to realize that this only happens with the support of wonderful community agencies. So I'm really excited to introduce to you tonight an agency, or reintroduce to you tonight, an agency that works very closely with our schools. That agency is Teen Court. So in a few moments, we'll have the Teen Court folks come up here and kind of talk just a little bit about what happens with Teen Court. But I want to tell you just a few things about it in advance. So Teen Court provides comprehensive early intervention for at-risk youth within Sarasota County in three very unique ways. The first thing that they do is they provide in-house support for families that request it and need it. They also provide services through our law enforcement and our law enforcement organizations. But then finally, they provide direct services and support within the school setting and system to our children. And that's what we're here to talk about a little bit further today and also unpack. So, and if I'm not introduced to you, the Executive Director for Teen Court, and she will share with you the extent of the services that they provide and the unique collaboration that they have with private mental health providers, for example, and the results that they have in early intervention and the prevention strategies for our students. Our schools at this point, particularly our secondary schools, administrators, teachers, and support staff rely very heavily on this collaboration. They rely very heavily for at-risk children with the Teen Court services that are provided. This year, we have worked to introduce Teen Court services and support at the elementary level as well. And I'm excited about the future with Teen Court in Sarasota County schools and how this can be a service to all of our students throughout our K-12 school system. So without further ado, I want to bring up our wonderful folks from Teen Court who are here today, and I'll introduce who's here, and they have a very special presentation for you to talk about their services and the future direction of the program as well. So first, I would like to bring up Heather Todd. She's the Executive Director of Teen Court, who I work very closely with as well in many different cases and instances. I also would like to introduce the President of their School Board, Mary Doherty, excuse me, who's coming up. And then also Kathy McBraugh, who is also a board member for Teen Court. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Clayton. Thank you for having us. Mary.
Thank you, Dr. Clayton. Thank you for that wonderful introduction. Good evening, Chair Ziegler, fellow board members, and Superintendent Bowden. Thank you so much for allowing us to be here tonight to tell you a little more about Teen Court and the services we're involved in, not just today, but for the past 30 years in this community. Teen Court was developed as the first teen court in Florida, and it now exists and has expanded to 57 of Florida's 67 counties. Our program here in Sarasota County that operates as a 501(c)(3) is a model, just not nationally, but internationally. So along with these wonderful young people we saw here tonight, we have so much to be proud of in this community. So for the last 30 years, what Teen Court has functioned as is a diversion program for young people who found themselves in trouble with the law. And we've done that extremely successfully and at a cost savings to taxpayers of $2.6 million just last year, operating as a not-for-profit agency. What we do, part of what we do, and Heather's going to touch on it more than I will, of course, but we take a holistic approach, a two-gen approach, not just to the young person who comes through Teen Court, but also the entire family. And we are seeing that our kids need services at a younger age, and we're seeing families need more services. And we want to be here to be that safety net for these families, to give them that hand up, to give them what they need to help not just the child, but the family. But we also don't want to forget our volunteers. We also engage a good number of students as volunteers who then go on and not only do they learn about civics, law-related education, but go on and volunteer and help young people peer-to-peer. So while we first started as a diversion program, I want to thank Superintendent Bowden because it was a couple summers ago when we talked about suspension and expulsions in the school system. You know, I don't know about all of you, but I really don't want to be judged on the choices I made when I was like 15. And what's happened with young people is these choices are staying with them longer in life. So good kids do make bad choices, but with early intervention and prevention, the research will show if we can take that young person and if we can catch them at that point and we can engage them with meaningful consequences and programs that work, we can get them back on track. And Teen Court has done that with an amazing 5% recidivism rate and an amazing cost savings to taxpayers. So our wonderful Executive Director, Heather Todd, is here to tell you more.
So Mary touched on, thank you first of all for having us. And what a special night to see all of these young people. It's my favorite thing. I want to invite you all to come to a Teen Court. We do it on Wednesdays every other week in Sarasota. We do it once a month in Northport and once a month in Venice. And you'll see exactly what you all saw tonight, amazing young people doing amazing things. So I'd love to have you all come and observe. Mary touched on the prevention, the early intervention, and the diversion piece, but what we're hitting out of the park right now is that prevention side as well as that early intervention side. And it's important because, and I'll introduce you to Katie McBrayer in a few minutes. She came through on the diversion side. Katie McBrayer is a board member now, but came through Teen Court when she was 15 years old. She got in trouble with law enforcement, but there were clear signs early on at school. And had she been sent to Teen Court earlier on that early intervention or that prevention piece, this story would have looked better. It looks amazing. I'm not going to ruin it, but it looks amazing, but it would have looked better because it could have been done earlier. And that's what we're trying to do now with that prevention side. That parent can pick up the phone and call our office and receive services, substance abuse services, anti-bullying classes, the sexting piece, the vaping piece that we're having, we're seeing a ton of. These services are available through the Teen Court program without that diversion or that judicial side, through that prevention and that early intervention. We also have it for the school administrators. So when Mary mentions that Superintendent Bowden brought that to Teen Court, it's through that school referral. The administrators can pick up the phone, the teachers can pick up the phone, and they can send that young person to the Teen Court program. You'll see on the screen that we served over 21 schools last year and this year alone. And again, it's getting into that elementary piece. It's definitely in the middle schools. You can see that it's grown over 1,000% since before that retreat, 2015 numbers, comparing that to 2017 numbers, it's up over 1,000%. We're available throughout Sarasota County, and we operate as a non-for-profit. I want Katie McBrayer to touch on her story tonight because you would never believe that the young lady behind me was homeless, that she was living in abandoned buildings and abandoned boats. And I think it's important for her to share that. And again, she'll only share a piece, but I think it's important for you to hear. Katie?
So I'll try to make this a little quick. So I was in high school, I was 15, a sophomore, and I started kind of hanging out with a bad group of people. I was in the IB program. I had straight A's. I was wildly intelligent. School was not very challenging. And I started dating an older guy. He started, he got me addicted to drugs, and I stopped going to school. I would go to take tests, so I would still do okay, but then I stopped going to school completely. I had overdosed at school, and they sent me to the nurse's office, and then they'd ask my parent to come pick me up. And I think that they definitely saw signs. I mean, I was kicked out of IB, so they saw signs, but there was nowhere for them to send me, and they didn't know where to go. My parents also didn't know where to go and couldn't afford rehab or afford a program to send me to. So everyone was kind of at their wits' end and didn't have any options. So I was then arrested for burglary, and then the following year, so I had overdosed in November and then gotten arrested. The following year in April, I was arrested again for grand theft and possession. And luckily, my mom had called a detective who had helped us and said, "I found marijuana in her house. I don't want her to go to jail. What can I do? I don't want to ruin the rest of her life." And they had just started this substance abuse program for Teen Court. This was in 2001. So I was the third group that went through the substance abuse program. In one day, my entire life was changed. You know, they talk about clean eating and mental health, and they have people, two people from the police do team-building exercises and let, show kids that, you know, they have their back and maybe their friends don't as much that they're hanging out with. We have a piece, they go to Sarasota Memorial Hospital, and the doctor there said that he recognized me, and he said, "I pumped your stomach in November." That hit a chord in me, and luckily, that day, you know, everything changed. I got in the car with my mom. I said, "I want to make up for this." I went to night school and made up classes, and everything ended up being okay, but I can only imagine how much better it could have gone. Maybe I didn't go as far and get as addicted to drugs and live in abandoned houses, and maybe I wouldn't have taken as far if somebody could have stepped in earlier. And if my parents would have known a place, maybe the school could have told them about, but also if the people, you know, working at the schools had someone to refer me to. The story could have gone a little different. Luckily, it turned out pretty good, but I think there's a lot of kids out there that really need our help, and they just, you know, parents, teachers, they don't know where to turn, and this is a really great program that everyone should know about.
And something... Yeah. Doctor, something that Katie did right away, which I know was priceless, was getting involved as a volunteer, and that's given to every young person. So whether they pick up the phone and they call and ask for mental health services, whether they pick up the phone and call and ask for substance abuse, whether they're coming through the Teen Court process, they all have the opportunity to come back and be jurors, bailiffs, clerks, teen attorneys. Katie was a mentor and a role model to some of the younger kids because, like we shared, we're seeing them as young as elementary students.
And really, I mean, no matter what kind of problem you're dealing with, something, giving back keeps you on the right track. It keeps you responsible and accountable, and the kids learn this, and they see other kids doing this, and something like turns on, a light turns on in their head, and they're like, "Oh, this makes sense," you know? And it gives them a reason to stay on the right track. It's really amazing.
And Mary's going to close it, but I want to share that we partner with organizations, and we plant the seed of civic engagement, and we know how important that is. We have to find what these young people's interest is. We saw that a few minutes ago when they were standing up here, whether it's art, whether it's sports, whether it's school, we have to find it. And if we have to expose them to that because maybe they're making poor choices, maybe we're starting to see red flags, the teachers and the administrators are the ones that see it first. Their parents do as well, but the parents don't know where to turn. And I love that you all care enough about the young people in this community to allow us to do this and allow us to get into these schools. We appreciate you very much. We can't do it without you. I always say it takes a village, and we're making this community a better place, and we're doing it one kid at a time. So thank you so much for your time. Thank you.
I think if you don't mind staying put, because we have lots of comments, so I'll let you.
You know, and that's how do you follow that? You know, I am so proud to serve on the board with Katie McBrayer and, you know, hear her story. I'm inspired by what this young lady has been able to do and the passion that Heather brings to this program. Also on our board is a young man who came through with the most number of felonies ever through Teen Court. And there's story after story. This is not anecdotal. This is not anecdotal. You know, these folks are saving lives in the community, and we appreciate your support. We appreciate the partnership Teen Court already has with the School Board, and we look forward to continuing and growing that partnership.
Thank you. Dr. Bowden.
I just want to thank you for everything that you do. You know it, but I don't think the audience knows, that when my daughter came to me as a high school student and said, "I need volunteer hours for my Bright Futures Scholarship," she chose to earn her volunteer hours through Teen Court, and she's excited about working with you. As we talked about what our response would be to the shooting in Parkland, we developed a five-point plan. One of those is to draw closer to organizations like Teen Court. There is a huge outcry for safety and security and law enforcement, and I don't want that to counterbalance our efforts at early intervention and compassion, is that there has to be a balanced approach. And so as we look at hardening our school sites and providing school resource officers at every site and building the capacity of our own school security operations and school marshals, we cannot forget the underlying issues. If we don't address the underlying issues, we're only treating the symptoms and not the cause. Anytime there's been a shooting in this country, there have been warning signs and more than one. And so it's programs like Teen Court that gives our administrators a tool in their toolbox to intervene at an early age. And once they come in contact with Teen Court, what I am so impressed by is they own that student. It's not a referral that they go over, they get a sugar pill, and they come back to us all fixed. It's ongoing. They have the ability then to refer to other organizations. And so I want to thank you for what you're doing and recognize your work, and just recognize that we need to pull closer to organizations like Teen Court in the aftermath of the Parkland shooting.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And thank you for that initial introduction to the administrators that formed this partnership.
Mrs. Brown.
I remember when Junior League had This Is The Project, and I remember going to the legislature and asking for funding. And I remember on the other end being asked for the funding. My son, who will be turning 40 this year, he, I think he was the volunteer end of the Teen Court. That might have had something to do with his, you know, getting a law degree later. But you see firsthand how important this is, and I also know how destructive it is when someone gets a record and how surprising it is when somebody goes to get their CNA license or nursing license, and then to find out that, "Oh, I got in a fight when I was in fifth grade," or, you know, "I took that Swiss Army knife to school, didn't know I had it," and all of a sudden, they can't get that license. They've got to go through all these machinations to get it taken care of. And so if we can get them out of the court system, I mean, the cost alone is too much. And I understand that the court system, I was reading about it in the paper, that, I mean, it's even before we get to the prevention part, even prior to or something, they got a program in Manatee County called Handle With Care, where the law enforcement officers or the children and family services will notify the teacher, notify the schools if, in fact, there'd been an incident in the home last night. Maybe, you know, somebody was being arrested, or there was a robbery or a domestic incident at the home. The schools are notified to handle with care. So if that child is falling asleep in class, you understand they're tired. So maybe you just let them slide a little today to handle with care so we know that something's wrong, that something's out of the ordinary with this child, and give them a little slack today. And I think maybe we might want to look at that, too. So maybe we could even prevent him getting into Teen Court, hopefully, and getting the help that these kids need earlier.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Mrs. Goodwin.
Well, I want to thank you for all you do in the community because it's noted, it's noted throughout the community. I think Teen Court has a very high approval rating with teens and students and parents and the community because you are known to do good work. And, you know, changing behavior is changing lives, and we don't do enough of that. We need to do more of that. And some of the things that, you know, we need to do is more in the social and emotional learning components, which I keep harping on, right, Dr. Bowden? But I really feel that you are doing that because you're putting those students into a place, into an environment where they see the components of building character and being responsible and being kind and all those things and how they relate to the other students. So whether they're on one side of it or the other, whether they're on the volunteer, and you have some very powerful young volunteers that I've met, or you're on the side of the student that's literally saved from a bad record and everything. In both cases, it's a win-win situation. So we're really happy to have you in our community. But if I were to ask you, what's on your wish list, what would you answer? How would you answer?
We know right now the mental health piece as we're seeing it, and I would be remiss if I didn't introduce my colleagues in the audience, Lori Moran and LaShelle Williams. They're on the front line, and they're seeing, particularly LaShelle Williams in Sarasota, Sean Slapp in South County, they're seeing the mental health piece. They're seeing that if a family gets into our office and they're not already seeing a therapist, it's because they can't afford one. And so that pot of money is going the fastest, and we know it's the most important. We have the meaningful consequences taken care of. The substance abuse piece as well, because what happens is they're lacking coping mechanisms, and then they start to abuse drugs. And maybe the parent doesn't know because they're vaping and it smells like cherries. I mean, these are, all these different things. So the case manager piece, as well as the mental health piece, to serve these families with quality services, this picture's big. This picture's big.
Currently, our case managers are in Sarasota High School one day a week.
Sarasota High School, Northport, one day, Northport High School one day a week, and Venice High School one day a week.
I'm proud to say we've really expanded the program down in Northport and been really embraced by the community, but right now, the case managers are in those three schools one day a week. If you're asking about a wish list, our wish list would be to have case managers... case managers in every one of the high schools several days a week and available to serve the middle schools that feed into those high schools, and possibly the elementary schools that feed into those high schools with the resources to be able to refer out for appropriate mental health and other programs as necessary.
Great. Dr. Bowden.
I just want to point out that directly after February 14th, we received some offers of assistance from local foundations who said to us, how can we help the district? Our response was to help build the capacity of teen court, that that is a direct support to us. So, we are working with teen court to marshal the resources to do that. We also expect that they'll be part of our plan that we put forth on mental health.
Great. Good.
Wanted to point out that as we've received assistance from people outside of the district that said, what could we do to help? We've said, actually, by building capacity of teen court, that's a direct support to us as a district, and we're working with them on that.
Excellent. Did you--
That's it.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Robinson.
First off, very good question, Ms. Goodwin. That was a very good question about the wish list. It's the way we're going to get feedback. I do want to point out, Dr. Bowden said it great about his daughter volunteering there. But what I was going to say is, I have three kids, but you have to be 13 to volunteer, so I only have two volunteering. My second, my middle one, he started like five days after he turned 13. He came down to your first Northport event down there, so glad to see you guys doing down Northport. But what I was saying is, I like the fact that they get referrals and then they end up volunteering and doing civil engagements. But sometimes you can have kids, I don't want to embarrass my kids, but sometimes you can see pre-referrals into them, and you put them there in teen court, and then you ask them, you know, what was the cases? What were the people being punished? You know, how tough were they? And getting that feedback. So they get some sort of, instead of waiting to the referral, getting them a little bit earlier and making sure that they understand, you know, that they're not smarter than their mom. Nobody's smarter than my mom and Christine. So I just want to take you, thank you guys very much for not only what you do for the community, but what you guys do for my family specifically. I'm watching Madison, but I know, but EJ, Johnny, and Christine are there volunteering. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for the volunteerism.
Mrs. Ucker.
I've known about you all for such a long time, and you seem to be growing stronger and stronger. And what I like that it's finally been, I think anyway, it's been resolved for DJJ at the state level because there was a commitment, DJJ wanted restorative justice, and they were, there was like a battle between restorative justice and teen court, rather than recognizing that both could be used and both are necessary, which is what I advocate for on this state board, because that's where I am. But there was a man that came to me a long time ago. He was 77, and he wanted to volunteer. And I sent out his background screening. This is when I was at JFCS. I sent out his background screening, and he was rejected. And the man was devastated because he was rejected. He did something when he was 17, and he was now 77, and I couldn't clear him because of that. There is a process that you have to go through, which entails having an attorney and filling out lots of papers and things. When I left there 10 years later, the man still had not been cleared. So it's something that our young people don't realize, that it really does stay with you for the rest of your life. It's not something you can get rid of. So going to teen court is such a fantastic program for these kids. Thank you very much. I know you work above and beyond what it is that a normal day would be, if there is such a thing as a normal day. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll wrap up with, Katie, first of all, thank you for sharing your very brave story. I think that it's a testament to how powerful the program is to be able to come up and speak and tell a very personal story and how meaningful that is. So I really appreciate your honesty. You know, this is a timely presentation as we continue to talk through what the solutions are. And I think everyone on this board agrees that there is a mental health component that's much more holistic that we need to be focused on. I know that we're all committed to it. So, but working with resources like teen court and seeing the historic success of it, 30 years, is pretty tremendous in the way in which it's grown, and it's organic, and it's peer-to-peer. Obviously, I think we're all enthusiastically supportive. Please let us know how we can continue to support you because you guys are making a tremendous impact on our community. So thank you so, so very much for coming today.
Thank you very much.
And we have one more final presentation tonight, and it will be led by Tripp Jennings, Assistant Director of Career Technical Education.
Good evening, members of the board, Mr. Superintendent, parents, guests. Mr. Robinson, just so you know, my kids are five and three, and I pre-refer them all the time. I'm here to present some career and technical education data, as well as I've invited several students to spotlight some of the exciting things they're doing in their CTE programs. So first, let's look at enrollment. Our current enrollment in our CTE programs, 9,309, that includes middle and high school programs. Some of those are dual-enrolled. Just to give you a frame of reference, in your packets that I gave you, you have a breakdown of enrollment over the last four years, which has remained fairly steady. For time's sake, I didn't include it in the presentation. But the enrollment has been steady and consistent over the last four years, and in my opinion, that is impressive, given the fact that there are so many other options for students at our schools, including international baccalaureate, AP, ACE, dual enrollment, lots of other options. But CTE enrollment remains steady and high, and I think that's a testament to the quality of our programs and that it's meeting the need of students who seek career education. Industry certifications--
Excuse me. What was the dual-enrolled STC students? Where are they dual-enrolled?
At STC.
STC and one of the other schools?
Well, that 752 is part of the 6,004 high school CTE students. They spend half their day, their junior and senior year at Riverview High, for example, and half their day at STC.
And that's what the 752 number is?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
CAPE industry certifications, and just to give you yet another acronym, CAPE stands for Career and Professional Education, and the CAPE Act was passed by the state of Florida in 2007 with the purpose to improve middle and high school academic performance by providing rigorous and relevant career curriculum to support local and regional economic development and provide our graduates with access to high-demand, high-wage careers. One key component of that CAPE Act is a CAPE industry certification list. And that list is populated with nationally-recognized licensures and certifications often required and needed for industry careers. For example, Microsoft and Adobe have certifications on that list. And in front of you, you see 3,136 earned during last school year in 1617. And then if we look at the trend of industry certifications earned since our school district started them in 2009, you can see that's a nice direction that that bar graph is heading. And I think also to note, our enrollment over the last four years in CTE has remained the same. Industry certification attainment continues to rise. And students continue to earn industry standard credentials, they earn articulated college credit, and acceleration points towards their school's grade. And I think the continued rise in these certifications is due to several things. One of them is administrative support is improved. Cost center heads and assistant principals are very involved in CTE programs at their school sites, and I think that continues to help, as well as students and parents are becoming more educated about CTE and career options for their students. And finally, highly qualified teachers in our CTE programs. We are connecting much more closely with industry, and our teachers that we are retaining and obtaining are of high quality, and that leads to our students being better prepared to earn these certifications. Another factor in the increase is the addition of digital tools certifications that started in 2015. These were added to the CAPE certification list by our Florida Department of Ed. They are aligned for middle schools with the purpose of demonstrating digital literacy and preparing students for future coursework and life after graduation. Yes, sir?
I'm just curious if the colors on these graphs, are they legacy colors? Have they been existed for multiple years?
I was told these are appropriate colors.
Okay. I just was double-checking there.
Well done, sir. Well done.
Now, let me get my place. You can see that the middle school numbers for these digital tools is significantly on the rise, and the elementary schools are obtaining some of these credentials. As we continue to explore options to enhance and infuse career and tech education at the elementary level, you can see some of our elementary schools have taken the initiative to earn these middle school-level credentials. So, any attainment at the elementary level, in my opinion, is a success.
Mrs. Goodwin.
Let's talk about that for a minute. How long are those certifications in effect? And, you know, what is the benefit to the student of getting those in middle school?
The digital tools certifications, again, they demonstrate digital literacy.
Right.
They help prepare the students for their future coursework in high school. We know everything's moving towards technology and computer-based, internet-cloud-based. This gives them a step ahead moving towards those. And the credentials also earn dollars back to the programs at the schools.
And the credentials are good for an extended period of time. They're not something that are going to expire any year.
Correct. Correct. Yeah, they're industry standard credentials.
And so, the digital tools, unlike other industry certifications, are not available to the working public. Most of our industry certifications really are the industry standard at which working professionals can distinguish themselves from their peers. The digital tools certificate was developed specifically for elementary and middle school students to prove to a third party their digital literacy. And so, they would not have value on a work resume, per se, because they're not as recognizable. But they are a gateway to industry certifications like Microsoft Office Specialist, and they're a great precursor to that.
Mr. Robinson.
I know these count towards the accelerated middle school, but when elementary school kids get it, does it count then, too? Or is it really only middle school? And in middle school, is it only eighth graders that would get credit for that?
You are correct. There is no such thing as elementary school acceleration. And so--
Does that get credit towards the middle school acceleration?
It does not. This is not one of the industry certifications that gets us credit. They have to complete what I would call a traditional industry certification for them to receive acceleration points. And I do believe later in the presentation, you're going to talk about some of the industry certifications earned at our elementary schools or our middle schools?
Yes.
Okay. I don't want to steal his thunder, but there are certifications that allow points for middle school acceleration that are included in both the school grade and our district--
And you just have to be in middle school. You don't have to be an eighth grader to get it, correct?
That is correct. But you can only get credit for it once throughout your middle school experience.
Thank you.
Okay, here's some interesting data regarding CTE, a couple of them that I'll touch on. One of them, Dr. Bowden was just speaking on. This year, we started a pilot program where we're offering a high school-level course. That's the DIT, Digital Information Technology. We're offering that at three of our middle schools, Heron Creek, McIntosh, and Sarasota Middle. 89 students total are enrolled in that DIT high school-level course. So, we will have 89 students going into their ninth grade year with a high school credit already. And that is the prerequisite course in a lot of CTE pathways, so they will have one course ahead. They can jump right into their pathway as a ninth grader. So I think that's of good note. And then, of those 89, 23 have already earned the full Microsoft Office Specialist certification that Dr. Bowden was speaking of. And I only see that number increasing between now and the end of school. We have two more months, of which testing will now ramp up. And that is a certification that we have adult students obtain. It is on the post-secondary certification list, and it's made up of subtests of Microsoft Word, PowerPoint, and Excel, and we have eighth graders earning that. So to me, that's a testament to the support of the program, to the teachers, and to the students selected in those classes. Second note I want to speak on on this slide is, we have over 200 students this year that are in CTSOs, a career and technical student organization that will be competing at the state, national, and world level competition and conferences. Those student organizations include TSA, Technology Student Association, Future Business Leaders of America, Future Farmers of America, HOSA, Future Health Professionals, and Skills USA, and Vex Robotics. Hopefully, you got to interact with some of these students in the lobby. I asked some of them to bring some of their visual aids, so to speak. They have very impressive peripherals that I could spend the next six hours marching them up and sharing with you guys. But I asked some of them, who are not going to present, to present and interact with you all in the lobby, so hopefully you were able to do that on your way in. On a side note, I highly encourage all of you to go take some time on your calendar and visit our CTE classrooms and labs, because it does not do it justice what you will see today when you go into those labs and see what's going on. It's remarkable. I'm going to make a special note about TSA, Technology Student Association. We have a lot of students here representing them. Their national competition and conference is in June of this year in Atlanta, and we have several schools here that will be, that all placed in the top four in the state, that will be competing at the national level in June. And if I name your school and your event, if you could please stand, we have Riverview High School will be competing in fashion design, and I believe they are wearing their designed fashion. We have Sarasota Middle School with their STEM animation. Not sure if any of them are here. Pine View with their 3D animation. Sarasota High School with their transportation design. And Northport High School with their animatronics, and we'll hear from that later. I can't leave the subject of student organizations without touching on Vex Robotics and mentioning our Brookside Middle School team, who is, as we speak, in Iowa, go Hawkeyes, getting ready to compete tomorrow in a U.S. Open Robotics Competition. And on April 25th, they will be competing in Vex Worlds Competition. I think the instructor is on your agenda for next month, but I'll go ahead and brag a little bit myself. Just to let you know how well this team does, they are currently number two in the state of Florida and number 22 in the world. So, put that in perspective. There are thousands of Vex Robotics teams in the world. They are number 22 in the world today. So that's very impressive. Yes. When I accepted this position at the beginning of this school year, Dr. Bowden had a conversation with me. I worked for him at STC for several years. He said, now you know your title is CTE K through 12, so what are you doing K through 12 in regards to CT? So I said, challenge accepted. So, me and my team got together and we decided, let's tag one word to associate with each of the levels, elementary, middle, and high school. So, elementary, the word we came up with was awareness. We want to increase awareness of career and tech ed at the elementary level, so that students can learn about careers beyond what mom and dad do and the public services, where they can learn about themselves, what they're good at, what they're interested in. And there's a list of things there that are already happening. Some college and career centers are at some of our elementary schools that raise awareness of careers and college tracks, and this helps educate parents as well. The Career Clusters of the Month is another one that we started this year. The Florida Department of Education has designated 16 career clusters in which all of the CTE curriculum lives within. You do have a matrix in your folder of the career clusters, CTE programs, and the schools at which they are occurring for this school year. And so, we determined one of those career clusters per month for the school year, and on a three-year rolling cycle, so we'll hit all 16 of them. And every elementary school is doing something a little different to address that. They're using bulletin boards, their morning news, guest speakers, mini lessons, lots of different things. So, those are some really good things happening at the elementary level, and we only look to increase that in the future. As far as the middle school level, the word we associated was exploration. We want to move from the awareness level in elementary and go a step further, and now students can really explore career and tech ed. One big piece of that is career advisors. We have career advisors in place at all of the middle schools. I have and plan to work very closely with them to-- I have and plan to work very closely with them to help equip them with some knowledge. I've been in the realm of CTE for the last eight years, so I'm very in tune with, and that's my only job. I don't have the burden of having a cost center to run as well. I get to focus 100% of my time on CTE, so I want to work closely with those career advisors to give them what they need so they can educate students and parents and help them plan for their high-school tracks as well as beyond. Another thing at the middle-school level that started this year was career explorations. Put on, they are sponsored and organized by the Education Foundation, and through those, students get to go on field trips and visit businesses and local industry, get hands-on, FaceTime interaction with business owners, and hopefully that sparks some interest or at least educates them, and they can further explore what their interests are. And then finally, at the high-school level, we move from exploration into concentration, where a student, once they've explored at the middle-school level, they kind of know what they want to do through our CTE program pathways. At the high-school level, they have the ability to take a CTE course all four years of their high-school experience, with the senior year culminating with internships, business partnerships, and beyond. Again, as we mentioned earlier, students have the option to dual-enroll at Suncoast Technical College, near and dear to my heart. I've been there for years, and I think it's a gem in our community that students have all kinds of options there. And then you can see the other things on the list. Now, my favorite part, student spotlights. I chose a few students to come and discuss their experiences and opportunities that they've had through their CTE programs. The first one is Victor Arismendi and Evan Laffey from Booker High School's Engineering Program have worked closely with Jim Hillier from the Mot Marine Laboratory. He is an oceanographic instrumentation engineer, and I will, I don't believe Evan Laffey was able to come tonight, but Victor is here, and I'll invite him and Jim to come forward, and they can discuss with you what they have been working on in the realm of red tide detection equipment. So, gentlemen, I'll invite you.
Thank you for inviting me tonight, and thank you for bringing us two brilliant students that helped us put together our red tide sensor. What that is, is a, it has a new name. It's the, I have to read this, and you'll know why in a minute. It's the Programmable Hyperspectral Seawater Scanner. P-H-Y-S, we nicknamed it FIS. Much easier to say. So part of the plan with our project to redesign the original red tide sensor was to make two units, this is one of them, for desktop or benchtop use. So in that redesign, we got pretty busy, and there were some electronic problems that came out of nowhere, threw us way off in software stuff, so I got behind and needed an enclosure. And this is, one of the guys who made that for us, in just a few minutes, what, 15 minutes? Some sketches, and a week later, they came back with that. So thank you. And Victor?
So my name is Victor Arismendi, and I'm a senior at Booker High School. This is my third year in their engineering program, and Evan and I, unfortunately couldn't be here. Evan and I, you know, we were contacted by my Mr. Hillier about this project, and we sat down with him, and he gave us, you know, his design and his sketches, and we talked about developing this housing. And as he said, you know, pretty much a week later, we came out with it. You know, it was a great opportunity to be working with him, especially because it was like as if it was a real-life engineering job.
It absolutely was.
It was, it was. We got, you know, we got to meet with him at his research lab. We got to see how, you know, real-life engineers do their job in a real-life setting, and it was honestly a great opportunity that, you know, I've never been presented anywhere else. So it was truly spectacular.
Any questions?
Any more questions?
Doctor Bowden?
Have you secured your letter of recommendation for Mr. Hillier yet?
Pretty much. I mean, I'll keep him here.
Make sure you have that in your file.
Yeah.
Mrs. Goodwin.
Well, I think that's terrific, and I bet you're going to be a really great engineer someday. So give us a little idea, you're a senior at Booker?
Yeah, I'm a senior, and I'm planning to go to University of Central Florida.
Oh, wonderful.
Yeah, for computer engineering next year.
Wonderful.
Correct. That is great. Congratulations and good luck. We'll see you at graduation.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
The next students I'd like to invite up are Emily and Katie from Venice High School's Medical Academy, and they'll share with you their experiences through their participation in that program.
Hello, I'm Emily, and I'm a senior at Venice High School, and I've been in the Medical Academy since freshman year, and it is such an amazing experience. I knew eighth grade that I wanted to do something in medicine, but I didn't know what. So freshman year, we started with anatomy, and, I mean, I remember being a freshman and sticking the names of bones all over my body, trying to figure out where everything goes. And then sophomore year, we learned about more of the administrative side and kind of what goes on behind the doors. Junior years was a gap year, and then senior year was EKG. And I was, I passed the test, so I'm EKG certified. And actually, being in this class this year definitely gave me an interest in being a cardiologist. And with my success in the program, my little sister is even coming up through it now. She starts this fall, and I'm so lucky that I got to get to do this program. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I'm Katie. I started with the Health Science Foundation in my freshman year. I went from hearing names in the household and not knowing anything to, I think I learned every bone in the body, every corresponding muscle, and just about every part of anything. It's given me amazing opportunities. We've been partnering with the hospital and doing rounds there. EKG certified. It's been an amazing opportunity to get into the field, to meet people in the field, and to really explore the different kinds of medicine and not just, you know, cardiac or, I mean, we've met just about a doctor in every single field that can, you know, either say, "We want, you know, we want you here," or we can have the option to go into anything. It's been a great opportunity. We also had a doctor come in who came in and spoke to us, and he's an ER doc, and he turns to us and he goes, "You know, you guys are lucky. If I had this in high school, I would have been so much better off in med school." So it's awesome that someone who went through med school, went through the eight years, did his internship, did his residency, was able to stand in front of us and say, "You know, you guys are definitely lucky that you get exposed to it early on, so you know, so you have the flashcards when you go into med school, that you don't need to really focus on learning all the prefixes and suffixes. You can just kind of jump right into it and be like, 'Oh, yeah, I know that because I did this in high school, and I still kept all the notes after it.'" So it's really awesome that we get to experience this, and I hope that it can move through all the high schools and there's other kids that can say, "Oh, yeah, I was a part of the Medical Academy, and it was one of my best experiences."
Wonderful, thank you. I know, Mrs. Brown?
I'm just amazed that, you know, kids are in high school, and you have an understanding of what it is you want to be when you grow up. I mean, so many of us, I mean, and I think still, kids go off to college and have no idea what they want to be when they grow up, and I'm like, "You should have grown up already. You should be there." And then to even know that you've got a big leg up on what it is you want to do, I mean, it'll make college and graduate school so much easier for you, and I'm glad that we've got this opportunity. And, I mean, to be able to do something like with, make that housing for that red tide, I mean, these are things that, you guys are doing things you're not supposed to do, but nobody told you. Nobody told you you're not supposed to be doing that. And it's just like these little kids who pick up these computers and start doing stuff. It's like, you know, "I got to hand my thing over to my granddaughter, but how do you get this to working again?" You know, well, she's eight now, but I did it before she was even in kindergarten. Nobody told you what you don't, what you can't do, and you're doing it. You guys are just out there, you're doing it, and I am, I mean, when we started talking about careers in middle school, we got a lot of pushback, and I'm like, "Are you kidding? Who's thinking about that?" But I see how excited you are about it, and you need a reason to be going to high school other than just meeting with your friends. I mean, a reason to be going and to have something to show for it, and you've got that medical background. There are so many directions you can take that in, and I'm just glad that we're able to provide that for you, and thank you for taking advantage of it.
Our teacher at the Medical Academy is Ms. Lash. She's actually here with us, and she is the best.
Can you stand up so we can recognize you? Yay! Apologies.
And I want to put a plug in for that fashion design. I've been saying all along, listen, our kids want to do fashion, as we have stuff over there. Yeah, I want to see you guys again. Stand up, please. You know, we've got plays that the kids are doing, they can have help with that, and the circus wants costuming and designing, and I see that you want to be a model in those shows that are on TV, and I'm like, "Yeah, look at that. Look at that." Thank you so much. You guys are great. We just, we're offering so much, and, I mean, I was wrong. Middle school is not too young to start with this, and now they're saying, "I don't know that I would get that industry certification at Microsoft." They've changed it all, and you guys are just spinning circles around all of us. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Goodwin.
So you girls are seniors?
Yes, ma'am.
And where are you going to college?
I'm attending SCF for two years, and then looking at USF to finish up my bachelor's in biology, and I've started looking for, at med school, and my first choice is Boston University.
Good choice.
Second choice is Mayo in Arizona, and then from there, I'm looking into Canada.
You know, we have a Mayo in Florida, too, in Jacksonville.
Oh, that was...
A big, a big Mayo in Jacksonville. More liver transplants there than any facility in the world. They say it's because of the helmet laws. I don't know. But at any rate, and where are you going to school?
I'm taking a semester off, and I'm going to be going to SCF. I'm going to be using my EKG certification to, you know, sit on some money, and I hope to go into nursing or I want to become a paramedic.
Well, that's great, because we can use you all in this community. You know, we really need, we have a shortage of nurses in most hospitals, and that's a wonderful profession, a lot of flexibility with your schedule if you have family or other things and other options. But I wish you both the very best, because it's wonderful seeing the sparkle in your eye, and, you know, I love the fact that we're doing awareness exploration and then what's...
Concentration.
Yeah, exactly. But, you know, I just think this is all so important, and I knew what I wanted to do when I was in probably ninth through 10th grade, and that was really simple, because there's only two, three things that you could do if you're a woman. But at any rate, I really think that the sky is the limit, and very best of luck to both of you. Thank you.
Mr. Robinson.
I'm going to call Mrs. Goodwin out for a second, because she's very apropos for what you're talking about, about Venice High, working at the Venice Hospital, because one person on this board who bridges that gap is Jane. Not only is she's on the school board, she's also on the Venice Hospital board, so I just want to make sure that she doesn't get away without that being mentioned.
Thank you so much. It means a lot. Thank you so much.
So I, I'm sorry, I've embarrassed you twice now, so, and I still don't know what I want to be when I grow up, so as soon as I figure it out, I'll let you know. But my only suggestion to you is, you know, especially since you're going to SCF and staying here locally, is, you know, seek out a doctor and see about interning in their medical practice. So, I mean, there's plenty of cardiologists around. In fact, one in particular happens to be chief of staff of the Venice Hospital.
That's right.
So, and she just started her own practice, so she'd be looking for, she'd be looking, she will be looking for some help. Dr. Hassler will be, so that's my suggestion. And I do want to just deviate from talking about the medical practice, just about STC in general, and particularly about Northport, because halfway through our talk, one of our great partners in Northport walked in, city commissioner from Northport, Jill Luke is way back in the background. So I just wanted, we didn't want her to go without recognizing, you know, the fact that sometimes we go down to Northport, but to have Northport people come up here, we really appreciate that. So thank you, Jill. Thank you very much.
Thank you for sharing your story and for...